This conference will now be recorded.
Wrong one. There it is. There it is. All right. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Let's see.
May I see everybody except for Arch?
Yeah, Arch is the only one missing.
All right. Have we heard from Arch?
No, sir, I have not.
There's not two meetings at night, so we can't be in the wrong one this time. All right, we'll get started. Go back to this page. All right, notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a special call meeting on Monday, August 10th, 2020, at 9:01 a.m. as prescribed by VTCA Government Code Section 551.041 to consider the following agenda item. Has anything changed, Sandra? Everybody but Arch. All right, we'll start with citizen comments. In accordance with Open Meetings Act, councils prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. The only thing we have on the agenda is our discussion of tax rate. So if anybody in the audience has a quick comment they want to make. Arch has arrived, Sandra. Now's the time. Yes, Darcy.
I turned off.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Got it? What the screw up was online, the day said Tuesday, but the date said the 10th, so everybody was screwed up with these meetings, okay? So just to clear that up.
Yeah, that's on the second one, the 3pm meeting. In the heading, it says Monday, but in the body, it says Tuesday, but.
Right, so everybody was just confused, so that's all it was, everybody.
Yeah, and I've tried to clarify that, but that's a separate meeting. All right, anybody else? Yes. Christina.
Don't we generally set the tax rate after we set the budget to know that it falls in line and balances the budget?
No.
The other way around.
No, it's a little bit different. The timeframe is different now because of the new Senate Bill 2. Things are different, but it's always been you set your rate first. And the way it used to be, we would hold a meeting and say, we're setting our tax rate at a point of not to exceed point. And then we would work our budget from there. Of course, your staff normally would work their budget based on the current tax rate. And then, once the tax rate was set, you would adjust your budget. But now, we can't do the not to exceed amount. We actually have to set a specific amount. And in their timeline is based on what amount we set as far as the budget. And you'll hear us when we go through this, but that is an agenda item, so I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't be discussing it, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we'll actually go into the agenda then. Action number one, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a vote on adaption, adoption of a proposal to set a 2020 tax rate of .65 cents of 65 cents per hundred dollars evaluation for the city of Lago Vista, schedule public hearings, and take necessary action. All right, let me go back to my meeting time here. All right, so Josh or Aaron, I will need you all to help me with the timeline because, I don't know, I've got mine in the car or something. I don't know where I set mine down, so I don't have mine physically in front of me.
Mayor, and I was going to ask Aaron, if Aaron had the Word document, we can either, if you send me that one, then I can go through it. But I've got a document in front of me, and then I just wanted to post that on the screen so people could see it as we're talking about it. And so, Dave, if you'll make me a presenter, I'll talk about it, and then when I click on it, we'll pull that document up. Okay, there we go. And then, when I get that document, we'll bring that one up. So Mayor, so like you were saying earlier, the discussion today is the proposed tax rate. And as you already said, it's set out in the budget, in the proposed budget, at 65 cent per hundred. So what council would do is take an action on the proposed tax rate today and then schedule the public hearing for when we will have the discussion on that tax rate. And right now, we've got a schedule laid out. If we stick with the 65 cents, then we would end up having to adopt the budget and the tax rate by the 24th of this month. The voter approval tax rate is .6475. So the voter approval tax rate is actually lower than the .65 tax rate that's used in the budget. The de minimis rate, however, is .6782. And de minimis only comes in with this SB 2 legislation that says that the council can raise the tax rate to this level without having to have automatic voter approval on it. So we haven't done that in our proposed budget for the de minimis, it's at 65. So if council keeps the proposed tax rate at 65 cents, then we'll follow this schedule, which I just said, and we'll put that on the screen in a minute. If council were to lower the tax rate to .6475, then you would not have to follow that schedule, if that makes any sense. I'm going to share that now, Mayor.
Okay, I was gonna say, when you put the schedule up there, it will make more sense, but.
Okay, so here you go, if you can see that well, that'll show you two tracks. The track on the left shows if the council goes with a rate that exceeds the voter approval tax rate, which again is the .6475. And then the track on the right, which is this area here, shows that if the council does not go with the proposed tax rate that exceeds that amount.
The timing all has to do with whether or not the city would have to allow an opportunity for folks to submit a petition to have a vote on the proposed tax rate. So. It requires you to build in a lot of extra time on the front end and essentially pushes everything up almost a month.
So basically, so you got your calendar on the right-hand side of this spreadsheet here. If we go with the voter approval .6475 or lower, it's basically the normal budget timeframe, having to have your budget approved by 30 September, no later than 30 September, for an effective date of one October. If we go above .6475, then we have to allow for the citizens to, we have to give them time in case they do want to put a petition together for a budget vote. The de minimis rate that was mentioned earlier, because we're a city under certain population that 3.5% mandatory voter election is kind of different for us. So we have a proposed, we have a tax rate out there that creates $500,000 of revenue. If we go over that, that's when the mandatory election comes in. That's the de minimis rate, and that was the one that said it .67 something. But I can tell you right now, there's no way in heck that we're going to be, there's no reason at all for us to even be considering the de minimis rate. So basically, what we're looking at today is whether council wants to lower our taxes to the .6475 or lower, or do we want to stick with the .65 that we've currently got our budget scheduled on? Frank?
I want to check a number. Aaron and I talked about this a little bit and want to make sure that what I heard was correct. The difference between the two rates of .65 and the other one is $25,000, correct?
Star or Josh should address that. I think they've done further number crunching so they can confirm what the actual impact to the budget would be.
Mayor, it's about 27.5.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
So, when we talk about those numbers, the difference in the tax rate, if we lowered it to the .6475, would mean a decrease in about $27,500 to the city. So it's not a huge difference. What that would do for the average, based on the number of households, not the average price of the household, but just your, if you divided it up by 4,000 houses, you're looking at about $6 and something that it would save each household in Lago. That's just an average on the number of houses, not the price of the house. Or some people would be $4, some people would be $10, you know, depending on the value of their house. But that's what it would mean to the citizens currently. So numbers, you know, it is what it is. But my recommendation is with the spirit of the law that the state legislature passed in 2019 and things that, you know, that we do lower it to the .6475 voter approval rate and go with that and do our budget as is recommended by state law. Yes, Don?
So what would be the lowest rate we could set if we wanted to get a little more aggressive with consideration to the fact that all of our property taxes have raised so much in the last two years?
The lowest rate? Well, if you completely, yeah. I don't know what the lowest, I don't think there is a theoretical lowest rate. I mean, you've got, you know, so much of your debt service in there and then, you know, maintenance and operations. But every, you think a quarter of a cent was 27.5 roughly? So every penny, you're looking at about $110,000 off of your budget and about $25 per household in savings. So if you wanted to go to .64, you know, just subtract about $110, $120 off of our current budget. So.
Keep in mind, gentlemen, that this is your proposed tax rate. This is not the final rate, obviously. So that, but it will establish where your budget goes. You know, in this particular instance, it does affect the timing associated with it, depending on whether you choose to go above the voter approval rate. But typically, the recommendation from legal counsel is to go with a rate that you know will give you the opportunity to work your budget so that you can provide all the necessary services that you can, that are expected to be needed for the city. So with that, just keep that in mind because the final tax rate, of course, isn't adopted until either it would be August 24th at the earliest or as latest, September 29th, depending on the number that you go with.
Mr. Mayor? Who's that? Yes, Tim?
Yeah, I think that Travis County has given us a pass this year on property rate increases. I don't know that we need to go any lower than we are. If you go to the Travis County Appraisal District website, in April, they put out a statement that said that an analysis of limited residential market data available showed that TCAD was unable to recalculate, recalibrate its models this year, resulting in most residential properties retaining their 2019 values. So what happened was that Travis County was screen scraping the Realtors' Board of Transactions in Real Estate and the Travis Realtors had been stopped. So Travis County does not have a way of evaluating property. So I looked up certain things, so some people did not get, there's different notices, no increase, or there might be an increase. Most increases were associated with homeowners exemptions. So they put down for Lago Vista residential homestead medium taxable value in 2019 was $195,692, so relatively 196. And the increase went to $200,340, which is approximately $4,300, $4,350, which at our tax rate is $2.21. So, yeah, last year, the last few years, we've had an 8%, 10% growth back and forth, but this year, it's pretty much negligible. So keeping a rate where it is now will protect us next year if they come back and smack us with large increases, and then we'd have to do different conversations around the tax rate, so. I think this year was a free appreciation.
Right, and I understand that. But the thing I have the problem with, though, again, is this timeline. If we leave it at 65 cents, I mean, again, the money, the loss, the difference in revenues for the city does not seem like that much, $27,000, okay? But it cuts our timeline down to, we got two weeks, you know, from today to adopt our budget if we go with 65 cents. If we set it at the .6475, that allows us to go all the way through September to work, continue working well on our budget, continue working with council members, citizens, our budget hearings. And in theory, to answer a question that somebody brought up in chat, we could even go lower than the .6475, but we've got to have that time. I would rather have, you know, six weeks to try and figure out what our final budget is than I would two weeks. So, you know, it's that new timeframe that's associated with these tax rates that I really don't like, and I would, you know, I've pushed for a lower tax rate for a couple of years now. You know, I've asked for it to be set at 64 cents for a couple of years. So I would like to continue working on our budget for more than two weeks and see if we can adjust it to make even a more, you know, a better decrease, but that's my opinion. Yes, Don?
So I'd like to point out, Tim's information is accurate, but that, you know, we don't want to fail to consider commercial properties in town, and a commercial property still got hit very hard, and they've been hit. I have a piece of commercial property and it's doubled every year for the last three years or come real close to it. So we don't want to put undue strain on our businesses. And I feel like just the money we've spent this year during the COVID response on what I consider frivolous things, I feel like we need to reel in our local government. And I would like to start the discussion at 59 cents being the rate.
I'm sorry, what?
To start the discussion with 59 cents being the proposed rate.
All right. So, you know, along those lines with Don there, if we want to look at something at 59 cents, you know, I again say we need the time, we need the six or seven weeks that this schedule gives us. I'm saying, you know, I would say today we go with the .6475 and work from there.
I just want to make sure y'all are all aware. If you go with a number at 59 cents, you cannot go above that number. You can only go down. So the recommendation is to propose the highest rate that y'all are comfortable with. And then, if you decide to go down, you can go down from there, but you can't go up, so.
Right. You got that. Don, does that make sense?
I'd just kind of like to take an aggressive action. I feel very certain that we're going to have more income this year because of the growth. And they're not going to back down on the evaluations. And if you have your home is homesteaded, like mine is, then I'm watching the rate go up at the maximum every year, and they're still making up that difference on the homesteaded properties. So you're going to see your property tax increasing continually until you reach the market rate on your homestead exempt home, and that'll be a burden to a lot of us.
Yeah, and we can only hope that your state legislature will take further action come January. And maybe they'll look at the appraisal district side of it instead of just your taxing authority side of it to help with these increases in taxes, but that's a different story.
State Legislature, counties. If you follow what's been going on, the Speaker of the House hates, quote, unquote, cities and counties and thinks that mayors and county judges that counsel with him are fools. That's all, if anybody follows Michael Quinn Sullivan, the Speaker of the House, and whatnot as that has occurred, they are doing things to try to remove as much power from the cities as possible. We had, any number of instances, building standards, franchise standards, taking over our extraterritorial, just. They also want to take away from us the ability to work with Texas Municipal League as our representatives in Austin, so that we have, we're silenced in being able to deal with the legislature. The Senate Bill 2 is not designed to protect, knock down property values. It's to keep them from going up too much, but at the same time, if you start going backwards and start losing momentum on your income, at some point in time, we're going to reach a threshold where we can't do the things that are necessary. At this time, we are ginned up. We're fixing roads, water, parks, airports, all the amenities, library, that we said we would do. So I just, we already to go backwards because we'll never get back up.
All right, I'd rather owe anybody less money to do the right thing. I'd rather take some action and control our own spending. It's a more proactive approach.
I don't think that's the right thing, that's my opinion.
All right, Arch?
Yes, I would like to remind everyone in this conversation about our dependence for the taxes that we collect on real estate versus what we collect in terms of sales tax. We're heavily dependent on our ad valorem tax rate. And I think it's important to point that out. I would like to ask Josh if he can pull up the percentages that we experience right now in collecting both ad valorem taxes versus sales tax based on the prior year.
Percentages of the amount we've collected?
Yeah, because I think our sales tax is right about 7% of our general fund revenue, correct? I mean, it may have changed a little bit, but I want to say last year it was 7%. You know, and our ad valorem was about 93% of our. I know there's some other things in there, but they're miniscule, but.
7.5% on the sales tax, Mayor.
Yeah, there we go. So 92.5% of our general fund revenues are, you know, ad valorem. So, yeah, adjusting our ad valorem does have a big effect on our budget. You know, we're not like Marble Falls with a lot of retail. We're not like Lakeway. You know, I was talking to the mayor of Lakeway, and their ad valorem property tax rate is like 16 cents. You know, because they have so much commercial stuff. They don't have residential ad valorem taxes like we do. And that's just something that's unique about our community. We have been trying to get more retail in here to offset that as much as possible, and it's slow going. COVID has definitely had an effect on that. You know, we had this, we've had this empty shopping center for decades. We're trying to get people in, you know, we're trying to get more tax revenue without just, you know, turning us into something that looks like Marble Falls or Lakeway. You know, so we're trying to offset that a little bit, but we are limited. Yes, Arch?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think maintaining what we have is more appropriate than going down to 59 cents per $100 valuation. To me, to go down that low would be like cutting your nose off to spite your face.
Yeah, well, again, you know, I say right now, for today's action, we take, and this is my recommendation, we set it at the .6475, which buys us the six weeks, seven weeks to work on this. And then, we spend the next six or seven weeks hashing out what our actual budget is and our actual rate. If we can get it down to 64, 63, maybe even closer to that 59, I mean, we might could do that, but that's, we got to have that time to look at that. Today's meeting's not, you know, not to hash out all the final details. Today is just to set the rate and figure out how much time we want. Do we want two weeks, or do we want six or seven weeks? You know? Yes, Don?
I'm okay with that approach.
So. Anybody else? All right, well, if that's all the comments I have from council, I will open it up to the citizens at this point. I don't have anybody that signed up, so if you would, just kind of raise your hand so I can see you in my tiny little windows here. All right, I see Paul with the hand up, go ahead, Paul.
I recall, maybe it was, I think it was the last city council meeting in which we were, the members of the council were attempting to find ways to raise revenue to cover about $150,000 in budget shortfalls. Is my memory correct on that? That ring any bells?
Yes, no, maybe. Yes, no, maybe. I mean, we had preliminary budgets that we were working on. And there was, you know, certain projects that are, were being contemplated. And, you know, with the department head request and stuff. And so based on the 65 cent rate, our, our proposed working budget at that time was a little bit off. And so we were trying to, you know, move things around just to get it under that 65 cents as a starting point. So now we're at the point where we got to set our rate and then we can work an additional. So yeah, budgets are always tight with requests and capital improvement projects and stuff. So you know, I think every budget, every city probably comes in over budget. And then you have to start making your cuts and, and eliminating things and, and. But until we, until we get a really good firm goal, what we want to achieve, we're, we're still just playing with numbers right now. And again, that's why I want that six or seven weeks to work these numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Anybody else? Okay, I see Dick.
You know, the only thing I'd like to mention to Paul is that we always balance the budget. When we finish the budget, when we turn it in, when we vote on it, it will be a balanced budget. We never do a budget with financial shortfalls in the end.
Well, state law, we have to have a balanced budget, so.
That's what I'm saying. It's always balanced.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the shorter period of time. We know what our tax rate is now and what it's done, what we did last year. I think we had a pretty good idea of what we want to do this year. I don't, I think that we don't need to stretch this thing out. I think we already know what we're doing.
All right. Hold on, Darcy. I see Arch's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask Josh how he feels about the two week timeframe. Is that doable as far as being able to lock down our, our budget?
Mayor, the, the difference in the two just takes away our September. So staff side, it's not, it doesn't change our ability to, to make the budget anything different. What it does is, for example, someone sent me a message this weekend and said, hey, I'd like to look at the budget. Well, if that person only gets to look at the budget for three weeks versus six weeks, then that may make a difference for citizen review time. I mean, I think that's part of the part of our mindset and part of what you've been saying, Mayor, is that not only are you taking away council review time, but potentially for the document being the larger document this year for citizens to be able to review it. So back to Council Davila, for staff, the timeline doesn't impact us at all. Just, it all goes back to if the council says you're ready within three weeks, great, we can make that happen. I know Star was here working most every day this weekend, making sure that our information was in to the state. And then Aaron and Star have looked at this calendar to make sure that we satisfy the new requirements. So in game, 824 versus 929, they're the same on the staff side.
Thank you.
All right, Darcy, you have a comment?
Yes, I'm just going to read from what I put in the chat. Wouldn't a lower tax rate draw more people to build out here, which could also increase the spending of sales tax if you have more folks? And wouldn't that also bring more people in to join up on your water bill, which you are also making revenue off? So I mean, to me, to go with the lower, the one that everybody has approved as a citizen, which gives you also the more time because they're also being in that new system that our budget's in, it's going to take some people some time to figure out the whole budget, which seems great. And having two weeks, which you have a meeting Tuesday, Wednesday on, and then you're going to have to double those back to back almost with meetings with people wanting to know what this is, that is. So I'm just hoping that you go with the, the one that ends in September.
Yeah, and you're right. In theory, it would encourage people. But you never know. I mean, the way the COVID is and unemployment and stuff, we may, the government quits bailing out everybody and just, you know, printing money and handing it out. You know, they stop with the, the whole entire United States, maybe the entire world will go into a massive recession, you know? So you never really know. But yes, in theory, you know, the lower tax rate. I mean, you look at us, you look at Texas as a state, how many businesses are moving to Texas because of those incentives of lower tax rate? You know, you got Tesla coming now. And so, yeah, you, you see on the one level that, yeah, it does work. You just got to fit, we got to figure out that balance in there where we can provide the services and the standards of living and things that people want out of their city. Paul, my screen changed, so sorry.
Thank you. I'm going to have to start introducing myself as the other Paul, you know.
That's right, yeah.
Right, the, the other Paul. So I, I just, I would suggest that there's a pretty strong motivation from my perspective for you all to stick with the 6475. And it's kind of, I'll use the analogy of you're either pregnant or you're not, right? So if you come in with a point 65, which is, doesn't make a lot of money difference to the city, as, as Josh already told us. But the message is that the council is looking at a maximum tax, which may change, I understand. But the council is looking at a maximum tax at point 65, which is larger than what the citizens already approved as a maximum tax. So I think it's a pretty, pretty significant message if you exceed the 6475 without much benefit to the city. So I would propose you keep that in mind as you vote. And then secondly, as you've been pointing out, Mr. Mayor, that gives more time for whether it's deliberation among the council or citizen review and feedback. And, and I would suggest, you know, in, in the same spirit, that the council consider taking seriously some sort of reduction, you know, whether it's as radical as what Don proposes or not, may not be the right answer. But at least something where you say, you know, if we're at 6475, here's our budget. But if we're at 62 or 63, pick some number, what are the things that would, that would reduce? You know, what would that budget look like? And obviously you don't want to kill the city staff with a million options. But I would suggest at least pick one option where you take a serious look at where would we pare back our spending if we did some sort of a reduction that was meaningful to people? And again, it's not because our ad valorem tax is a fairly small percentage of our budget, reduction of a few cents in the per, per hundred dollar value is not going to be a huge value to the city, but it will be a message to the citizens. So, you know, I think sticking, number one, stick with 6475 would be my recommendation. And then as we get to budget discussions, take a serious look at something that is lower than 6475 as, as an option to see, see how that budget would look. Thanks.
And I would like to make a clarification here, just because I know the Senate Bill two went into effect in 19, was passed in 19. This is the first year that it's actually gone into effect. They gave us, they skipped last year. They gave us some time to work through all this stuff. But when it says the point 6475 is the voter approval rate, that is a term that is with, it's in that Senate Bill two legislation. It is a term. It doesn't necessarily mean that the voters have approved that officially. Because the voters have not taken a vote on an election on a tax rate probably ever in the history of Lago. I, I don't know, maybe initially when they were formed, but we have never gone over that rate that would require a mandatory election. We've never had, we've, we have exceeded the percentage that would trigger the recall. But we've never had citizens actually put together a petition and request a, a recall election. So the voters have never officially approved the tax rate. So I don't want that, that that term of voter approval to throw off anybody because the voters haven't actually approved it.
Thank you for that clarification. That actually is useful. I'm, I'm afraid that in public forums, that clarification may be lost on many of our citizens, unfortunately. The phrase voter approved may mean something to most of our citizens that it really doesn't mean. And lots of explaining is probably not worth the effort for $27,500 to the, to the city would be my, my suggestion.
Thank you. Anybody else? Christina?
Just reiterating to the, the fact that the water rates were raised and if you were to raise the property values to, or the property tax rate, then it would just kind of be a bummer for people who are already going through things this year. It's been a tough year. So I don't, I don't think a raise, another raise would be timely.
Well, and again, some clarification on that. If we stayed at the point 65, that would not be a rate increase for the city. I mean, we wouldn't be raising our tax rate. We would be maintaining it at the 65 cents that we've had. This would be the eighth year in a row. So any increasing your tax bill would be due to the county raising the appraised value, the taxable value of your home. So yeah, it's an increase in your tax bill, but not necessarily, it's not the city increasing the tax rate.
But the gentleman who are wanting the two week timeline, possibly.
Yeah, yeah. I mean.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Tim.
That being said, I would like everyone to look at their tax. Lago discounts the taxable amount by 65%, 35% before we tax. There are other items that tax at 100%. I recommend that you go back and look at your taxes for the last three years and see where the greatest increase in what you've paid comes from. We are the smallest percentage.
Yeah, you're, the, the city of Lago, actually, as far as your overall tax bill, your city has been the lowest. You know, as far as your increase, but still because of the CAD and, and things like that, it does affect, you know, the citizens on a larger scale. But yeah, when you compare, especially like if you take in the ESD, I mean, that was a voter approved thing, but they added the overlay district of ESD 7, which in theory doubled. I mean, that was a 100% increase in your, in your overall tax bill. Just because of that one action and it was voter approved, but it went from 10 cents per 100 to 20 cents per 100.
And there's no cap and no sunset on that particular tax. It is unlimited. Can go as high as it wants.
I think it's capped at 10 cents.
No, if, if it's not sunsetted, as long as your property values go up, it goes up. And as long as you're paying property value taxes, you're going to pay.
Right.
Even though it's 10 cents or 20 cents, the top dollar amount is not capped.
That's correct.
Nor length of time kept.
Right.
And go back, I ask you please, 2017 to now, and take a look at that number. We're paying that tax and we have no voice. City has no voice in that. It's you citizens that are paying it. Us, us citizens.
Yeah.
We have nothing to say.
There's a lot of things out there, you know, you've got a hospital district that we pay for, county. I know, I haven't specifically seen from Travis County. But I think they're one of the entities, including Flugerville, City of Austin, that they are, they are pushing that maximum of 8% increase in their tax revenues. I mean, you've seen that everywhere. They're trying to take advantage of this emergency declaration with COVID to max out their tax increase. And this is just a personal thing for me, but for us to be the only city in Travis County and one of the few in the state, probably if we could, even if we only went down from 65 to point 6475, I mean, the fact that during all the stuff we're going through right now, if we could be one of the few cities to actually lower our tax rate, that would, that would speak volumes for our city. You know, so.
Yeah, you also got the ISD. I mean, just, I just ask you all to look at track your taxes for the last three or four years. Lago's pretty good.
Yeah.
And we're doing what we said we would do.
We're making, we're making pretty good headway. Anybody else? All right, well, I, we're at that point. If I have no more comments, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the tax rate at the voter rate of point 6475.
Second. Who is my second? I'm sorry. Right, okay, so I have a motion and the second from Frank. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? I'm sorry, did I have any nays in there? All right, then we will set the tax rate at point 6475. The proposal, not an ordinance, resolutions, pass unanimous.
With, with the clarification, we can still negotiate it down from there, right?
Oh, yeah.
Just clear for the people watching, it might have tuned in when that wasn't said earlier.
So, and Aaron, I saw you shaking your head.
I think we had one nay.
Oh, did we?
I think so. Clarification.
I had an eye from Arch that came in late. That's why I, I requested.
We have to record that vote on the documents. So I want to make sure we have it right.
All right. So it was, it was unanimous, right? There was no nays? Yeah, okay, I'm pretty sure it was unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
The word, tax rate has been adopted at a maximum of point 6475. Which starts, which starts with a small decrease for the citizens. So, yes, Josh?
Mayor, I put this back on the screen. I know it moved everyone's pictures around. So you'll see now this column on the left is no longer in play. We're going to shift over to the column on the right. So the next, we do have a budget hearing scheduled for this Wednesday. That's a, that's a council workshop to discuss the budget. And then the next discussion after that on the regular council meeting on, it looks like the 20th, then we'll schedule any public hearings that we need to have officially at that meeting. So we will not have unless council calls an additional budget workshop, we'll have the 12th and then on the 20th.
So everybody can go to work. You've got six weeks to come up with recommendations and, you know, Don, you're looking at an aggressive, you know, look at it. So bring your, bring your suggestions to our meetings and and everybody, you know, citizens, bring your suggestions. And things, the budget book is out there. You've got two things. You can look at the actual, what do you call it? A spreadsheet that you can get through ClearGov. And you've got the budget book, takes that spreadsheet and puts it into a book format and it includes narratives with descriptions and, and thought processes and stuff behind the actual spreadsheet. So it's all online. You can actually get, you can print off a copy if you needed hard copy. So. Yeah, okay, so the meeting, we've actually taken our vote, so we don't have anything, but I'll go ahead and, Darcy, I'll let you make one more comment.
Thanks. The book is online? I mean, is that at the ClearGov or is that through the Lago Vista Facebook?
So the, the book is actually through ClearGov?
Okay. And that, and that is like something I can like flip, 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 flip and read everything and not have to search for under proposed things you want to do.
You can either look at it online or you can print it out and flip through it. And, you know, you can only, you can print out just sections if you just, if you don't want to print out the whole thing. We'll make, the link should be on our website as well. And I share it on social media, the link to ClearGov.
Thanks.
Yep. All right. Well, excuse me, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned at 9:51 AM. Thank you.